You guys done? I'd like to call to order the meeting of June 21st, 2016. The first item on the agenda is the minutes from June 7th. Paul, do you have any?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the minutes of June 7th, 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, none, approved. And approval not required, no plans this week at all, Brian? None at all? And next item on the agenda is a public discussion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we take out of order the three decisions, because we can do those more quickly and the public meeting discussion of FWG LLC is likely to take much longer. So, give me a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 opposed, none? Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is planning board discussion decision for 155 Catherine Lee Bates Road, KLB nominee trust. Paul, do we have any notices on this? No, there were no notices. No notices last time, so we're all done. I'm just making sure. I usually skip that thing. I'm gonna make sure. Okay. Nominee trust Linda Clark and Noah Totten trustees, site plan review for construction of one new building comprised of 2,117 square feet for a four dwelling unit apartment located at 155 Catherine Lee Bates Road, BSS Design. So we've had this before. We have a draft decision?
So I'll read the motion.
If you'd like to read the motion, please.
Draft, June 22nd, 2016. Motion that the planning board vote to approve the application of 155 KLB nominee trust Linda Clark and Noah Totten trustees under Article 39, Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled "Site Plan Prepared for JML Care Center in Falmouth, Massachusetts", prepared for Falmouth Housing Corporation, prepared by BSS Design, dated May 11th, 2016, and scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, revised June 6th, 2016, four pages, together with landscape plan, site plan, prepared by TL Studio Inc., dated June 10th, 2016, and architectural plans Falmouth Housing Corporation Micro Apartments, prepared by Keenan &amp; Kenny Architects Limited, dated April 11th, 2016, with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The applicant, 155 KLB nominee trust Linda Clark and Noah Totten trustees, seeks to construct one new building totaling 2,117 square feet for four dwelling units apartments at 155 Catherine Lee Bates Road. The applicant has provided an updated landscaping plan dated June 10th, 2016, reducing concrete paving at the south corner, adding a gate along with an eight-foot-high privacy fence, adding evergreen screening along the border of the parking lot and the abutment house. Exterior architectural details of the building were also provided per the recommendations of the planning board, and the board finds this satisfactory. The board acknowledges and appreciates the efforts by the applicant and the development team. Because the project is on a corner lot, zoning bylaw 240-13 as amended by Article 20 requires the building commissioner to designate one of the streets abutting a corner lot to have the primary front yard. On February 2nd, 2016, former building commissioner Ladio Ardoa, CBC designated the Gifford Street side of the property as the primary front yard. Therefore, a side yard setback of 10 feet will be required along Catherine Lee Bates Road. The site will require approval from the zoning board of appeals. Any changes to existing water service will require coordination and an application with the DPW. Conditions: Plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to Section 240-183B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, as part of the relief sought from the cut moratorium on Catherine Lee Bates Road, the applicant shall submit detailed sidewalk work and ADA accessibility requirements as part of a driveway permit application from the engineering division. All work and public layout shall be performed under the direction of the town engineer.
The motion.
Okay, any discussion on the motion on the table? All have had time to review it. You studied it carefully. Okay, we ready? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, none? Thank you. Approved. On to the next. Next is applicant, Falmouth Hospital Association, Inc., Cape Cod Healthcare, Site Plan Review to Expand Existing Skilled Nursing Facility Notice, JML Care Center Located at 184 Terhan Drive, Holmes &amp; McGrath, filings. Now, we've got a request for a modification that, from attorney I meant, that the, our usual standard consideration, that the no applicant, no final occupancy permit be granted till the whole thing is done. That's what he would like, that the applicant requests that the last phase of condition one be revised to read, no final permit for full occupancy be, of the expanded facilities shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied. So, let me, we'll just basically let them occupy in phases, do all the regular inspections, and we'll sign off at the end. So the main motion could be changed to reflect the letter from attorney I meant. So whoever reads the motion should incorporate that line. Condition one, be revised to read. Okay, Bob, you got it?
Yeah.
Got it?
So, motion, draft, June 16th, 2016. Motion that the planning board vote to approve the application of Falmouth Hospital Association Care of Cape Cod Healthcare, Inc., under Article 39, Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled "Site Plan Prepared for JML Care Center in Falmouth, Massachusetts", prepared by Holmes &amp; McGrath, Inc., dated May 13th, 2016, revised June 13th, 2016, scale 1 inch equals 40 feet, six pages, together with architectural landscape plans entitled Cape Cod Healthcare, JML Care Center, prepared by Medcom Architectural Group, dated May 13th, 2016, 11 pages, with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The applicant, Falmouth Hospital Association, Inc., Care of Cape Cod Healthcare, seeks to expand the existing facilities at JML Care Center by adding six separate additions that will total 12,325 square feet. This application has been reviewed by the chief regulatory officer of the Cape Cod Commission, who has responded in a letter dated December 28, 2015, that commission review will not be necessary. The additions are comprised of administration entry vestibule, 1,465 square feet, ambulance entrance area, 8,770, no, 877 square feet, subacute patient rooms, 6,370 square feet, rehabilitation expansion, 1,400 square feet, employee dining expansion, 756 square feet, relocated stair, 156 square feet, and second floor activity space, 1,301 square feet. The applicant also seeks to rework the site grading at the front of the building to create a level entry with a covered carpet, add new landscaping, and reconfigure existing parking spaces. The applicant submitted revised plans addressing issues raised by the planning board and the Falmouth Engineering Division, which include a zoning table showing existing and proposed setbacks, adding drain manholes, and added note that drain pipe shall be cast iron when penetrating foundations, and a revised dry well detail. The applicant also provided an analysis of existing and proposed parking requirements, and the board finds this satisfactory. The board acknowledges and appreciates the efforts by the applicant and the development team. Condition, one, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to Section 240-183B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. That has been revised to read, no final permit for full occupancy of the expanded facility shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied.
Second.
I have a question, Chairman.
Yes, John.
Who will be the determining factor when they're allowed to have partial occupancy of certain areas of this project?
There's many inspections, but I'll let Brian answer that. I beg your pardon, I didn't hear the question. The final, who determines the occupancy?
They're asking for, for, partial, I'm sorry, they're asking for partial occupancy in phases. Who will determine when they're allowed to get that partial occupancy of each, of each phase?
I usually do that on behalf of the board. If I have any questions, I come back to the board.
And they have to go through the building department, I presume?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Paul?
Paul?
No comment. No.
All set? Moving right along. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, none? Approved. Our next decision is applicant Enterprise Rent-A-Car Company of Boston, LLC, Site Plan Review to Convert Existing Gas Station to Rental Car Business Establishment with 27 parking spaces located at 55 Davis Straits.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is here. Did you want to review the revised landscape drawings? How's that presented?
Yes, why don't we take a quick look at the revised landscape drawings? The lights, John? Better get used to the new position here.
So after the last meeting, it was determined that we did need a landscape plan. So Scott from JK Holmgren Engineering has designed a plan for us, adding landscaping and making them included so that we're able to, and this is Scott, to know what is included in the plan.
Good evening. So we basically tried to address four major areas of the site. The first one being the eastern side, which abuts the owner, the adjacent property owner along Springbars Road. There was some concern brought up last meeting regarding fence. So we're proposing in that area to remove that fence, do some general pruning and cleaning, removal of invasive vines in that area, and then mulching an area about 10 feet in depth along that frontage there, that driveway. The second area of concern along Springbars Road, there's one good-sized shade tree along there, and then one smaller flowering tree as you approach Davis Straits. We're going to be adding in another street tree along that, a street frontage, a red maple, to help enhance that street tree effect along that frontage as well. And then on the parking lot side of that, we're going to be adding in some arrowwood shrubs in a mulch bed, and then either side of the mulch bed, we'll be flanking that with a couple of white pines. So it'll help kind of break up the parking lot from the, from the roadway. The third area of concern that we're addressing is on the northern side of the site, again up against the abutting property, there's a pretty decent hedge roll on there with a couple of trees on it. We're going to be taking that mass of plant material and kind of turning the corner along Davis Straits. And right now, there's only a couple of small shrubs in there that are, you know, sort of rough shapes. So we'll be adding in a paper birch along the Davis Straits frontage, and some additional plant material consists of some inkberry, as well as some creeping juniper. And then in between the two main driveways of the site, kind of in front of the existing canopy, there's a sort of a moon-shaped island, if you will. Most of the island is currently planted with some pretty decent plant materials of good, of good size, and they're in pretty decent condition. So we're going to basically prune those and try to maintain that as best we can. But there are a couple of blank areas on the backside of the ID sign, which basically splits the middle of that island. So we'll be planting some, some more of the juniper in that island as well, with some New England aster. And then finally, there's an island that bisects the two streets at the corner there. That island particularly is, you know, there's probably two shrubs in there that, so it's pretty, pretty well just a mulch bed, if you will. So we'll be adding in a medium-sized angular gray boulder between those two existing shrubs. And then we'll be also adding in some more inkberry behind that with more of the juniper and more of the New England aster on that island as well. And then on the pinnacle of the island, if you will, we're adding a small bed of kind of an annual mix, a seasonal mix that will be provided by the operator. Things like, you know, peonies in the springtime and petunias in the summertime, you know, fall color like chrysanthemums and sedum during the fall, just to get a little more color in there as well. So in addition to the plant material that we're talking about, we're basically doing a lot of pruning, shaping, renovating the lawn areas, just kind of sprucing the place up, adding new mulch to all the existing beds that are there. So we feel that with the, the new plan that we have, we're meeting the intent of Article 24 of the bylaw, and we can certainly answer any questions if you guys have them at this point.
Okay.
Looks great.
John, what do you think?
Good, yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody?
Looking for a reader? Looking for a reader?
Yeah.
Yep. All right. I'd rather read than listen. Okay. Draft, June 22nd, 2016. Motion that the planning board vote to approve the application of Enterprise Rent-A-Car Company of Boston, LLC, under Article 39, Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled "Site Plan Prepared by JK Holmgren Engineering, Inc., dated May 18th, 2016, and scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, together with trade dress rendering dated April 28th, 2016, and landscape plan entitled Landscape Development Plan by JK Holmgren Engineering, Inc., dated June 16th, 2016, with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The applicant, Enterprise Rent-A-Car Company of Boston, LLC, seeks to convert an existing gas station to a rental car business establishment with 27 parking spaces. The applicant has provided a landscaping plan and an exterior rendering of the building and canopy per the recommendation of the planning board, and the board finds this satisfactory. The board acknowledges and appreciates the efforts of the applicant and the development team. Conditions: The plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to Section 240-183B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met.
Any further discussion?
If I can make a comment, I certainly appreciate the efforts of the applicant to address the issues raised by the planning board in the very timely manner.
All set, everybody?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, none? We, for those in the back, we've moved the schedule. We already voted, I see you showed up for your hearing, you've already been approved, Linda and Noah. We took it out of order and did it first. So you don't need to sit here any longer. I thought it'd save you some time.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
And I move that we return to the original order of the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're getting to the meat of it here. So, so this is a public meeting and discussion. It's a preliminary plan for proposed planned residential development of 81.3 acres consisting of 28 single-family lots located at 125 Falmouth Woods Road for the applicant. Notices?
35 abutments were notified by regular mail. It's not a public here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney with the firm of Narder, McLennan, and Fish in Hyannis, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, FWG LLC. Joining me this evening is Kelly Durphy Cardoza from Avalon Consulting Group. You'll be hearing from her very shortly, as well as Raul Dizardi Rivera from Horsey, uh, sorry, from Holmes &amp; McGrath, who's a civil engineer for the project. We, we appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening to review this proposal for a 28-lot preliminary subdivision plan under the Planned Residential Development section of your zoning bylaw. As many of you may recall, this plan, or a prior revision of this plan, was previously before the board as a preliminary subdivision request last fall, and the board reviewed it and issued a decision which included nine recommendations, including a recommendation that we come back to you with a revised preliminary subdivision plan, which we're here tonight in accordance with that recommendation. Since the last time you reviewed this plan last fall, the plans have been revised to address and/or respond to all nine of the recommendations that you made with the prior plan. In addition, we've had several discussions with the town planner, and I wanted to acknowledge and thank him tonight for his input and for meeting with us prior to filing the plan that's before you this evening. We also appreciate the staff comments that we received and the referrals, and we'll be talking through those with you tonight as well during the course of the presentation. I'm going to ask Kelly in just a moment to walk through the short PowerPoint and go through the plan, and pay particular attention, as she does so, to responding to the recommendations that you all made last fall, as well as to the comments that we received from the town department staffs and the referral that we received for this particular plan for you. Before I turn the podium, though, over to Kelly, I did want to briefly comment on the current open space proposal in connection with this subdivision plan. As is indicated on the preliminary plan, based on the calculations under your bylaw, the open space requirement for this PRD is 25.71 acres. In accordance with Section 240-131B of the zoning bylaw, one-third of that requirement, which is about 8.57 acres, is proposed onsite within the golf course. As you may recall, last fall, with the prior revision of the preliminary plan, FWG was proposing to meet the balance of the open space requirements onsite in areas on the golf course that were outside of golf play wooded areas. In response to that, this board and its recommendations felt that off-site open space should be considered because the prior proposal provided, provided open space in an area that was too isolated and fragmented. As a result, in the current proposal that's before you, consistent with your recommendation, we are proposing to have 17.14 acres of off-site open space that would be conveyed to the town for open space or owned by a nonprofit and restricted under a conservation restriction for open space. So that is a significant change since the last time that you saw this plan. And although tonight we're not in a position to identify that proposed off-site open space land, we are asking for feedback and hopefully approval of that approach from the board so that we may continue to pursue negotiations for that off-site land. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Kelly to walk through the PowerPoint and the plans, and then we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
For the record, my name is Kelly Cardoza. And also tomorrow, Noah may not be bringing me this, so we'll see how this part goes. The Cape Club, for, most of you were here for the, the previous presentation, but I know John is new, so I'll just briefly talk a little bit about the location and what the overall project is. The Cape Club is located off of Falmouth Woods Road, which is located here, which comes off of Route 151. Well, the property doesn't abut Route 28. You can see that it's fairly close at this location here to the west. The parcel was originally developed as Ballarat Country Club in the late 80s. It's occupied by 129.6 acres, and it generally had fallen into disrepair. FWG purchased the property about a year or so ago and started to renovate the golf course and the clubhouse. And their overall proposed build-out would include this 28-unit planned residential development, as well as some commercial accommodations which are not before you right now, but would, which would be located at that area right there, in the lawns and in the parking area of the clubhouse. The homes are located here in this big orange area, in the area that used to be occupied by the driving range. So one of the changes that has occurred is that the project received approval from the zoning board of appeals to abandon this driving range at this location, abandon the tennis courts that were located here, and relocate the driving range that has been constructed and opened just last week. The homes at this location will be served by town water and an onsite private wastewater treatment plant. That wastewater treatment plant will be located over here at the edge of the existing parking, and it will serve the flows from the residential properties, as well as the existing improvements, the clubhouse and restaurant, as well as the proposed commercial accommodations. There are just a couple of other pieces I want to point out. This location right here is a proposed wildlife corridor. There is an existing wildlife corridor here, which is 150 feet wide. Because this site is located within a migration area one, there is a requirement to satisfy some of the proposed wildlife movement through that area. We're not proposing any work at this portion of the site. It, it will remain the golf course as it is now, but there would be a commitment for that to be designated as a wildlife corridor. In addition, there's a Commonwealth Electric Right-of-Way here. It's a very small section of the project. It was noted on the staff report, and so I just wanted to point it out. That's also part of the site that will, that where no changes will occur. So this is just a markup of the planned residential plan. It shows the same property bound that we had before. This area is the clubhouse, the proposed new wastewater treatment facility here, and that is Lot A. That's about 19.9 acres. Lot B is the actual PRD lot, and it's all of this space up in here. Eliza had talked about covering the onsite open space with 8.57 acres that would be, exist within the golf course. That's this green-lined area here that's proposed to be the onsite open space. And this area, again, is the 28 units of, of single-family homes. The remaining open space would be that off-site parcel. Then this area right here is simply the remaining golf course portion, which we've called for purposes of this lot, C. Under your PRD requirements, there's an obligation to identify with a grid subdivision for 80,000 square foot lots, for the number of lots that could be built within this area. This plan meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw, and it shows that there could be 32 lots within that same central Lot B portion that I had just shown you. This slide shows you the PRD location for the 28 single-family lots. I want to note that the revision date on this plan is different from the one that you had in your original packet. Holmes &amp; McGrath made some changes to that plan in response to the engineering referral. So there has been a realignment of this portion of Road A, and some small changes in the square footage and dimensions of the lots in this area and in this area to, to satisfy that I'd like to just refer to those eight comments that you had issued at the, at the end of the last decision. The first recommendation was a list of waivers from the planning board's rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land. And so I have a letter that And so I have a letter that has the response, which I will submit to you. There are two waivers that will be requested, and both of them are relative to the width of the roadway at this location. Your roadway has a layout of 44 feet. We're proposing a layout of 34 feet. And the goal is to maximize the distance between the golf course and the residential properties, and also to try and make a smaller-scale walkable community. These are small lots. They're not particularly large homes. And the idea is that this is a walkable community that's part of a mixed-use development that would include the golf course, the country club, the hotel, and the residential development. The waivers would be referenced to Provision 305-24B1, which is to reduce the width of the layout from 44 feet to 34 feet, and then Provision 305-24C to construct the proposed roadways to a narrower layout than the illustration of the subdivision street sections that are located in the back of the subdivision regulations. This site is located within the Wild Harbor Coastal Pond overlay district. So you recommended that the definitive plan application include the analysis of development impact. Our proposal is to actually submit that information now. It's a little earlier than would normally be done in the preliminary plan, but the work has been completed. And that impact analysis indicates that by taking the affluent from the existing facilities, combining it with the affluent from these 28 units, and then adding in the full build-out, which would be the 80 units of commercial accommodations, the amount of nitrogen that would be contributed to the Wild Harbor River watershed area is reduced from what it is currently because right now, the country club contributes wastewater affluent to older Title V systems. The next recommendation was that the preliminary plan, or the original preliminary plan that was filed, depicted a one-way circulation pattern for what was called Road A at this location. You were not inclined to approve that concept, given the number of lots, and a standard subdivision roadway within the proposed 30-foot layout was recommended. We've actually expanded that to be 34 feet. It fits the utilities a little bit better, and it fits the sidewalk and roadway a little bit better in that area. The next comment was regarding the sewer water, telephone, and power utilities. They were located within the open space, as well as within an easement across several of the lots. One of the changes that Holmes and McGrath made to the plan that you see before you, but slightly different from the one that is in your packet, is that the utilities have been compiled so that they are not over any of the individual lots. That's the extent that they could get them out of the open space area. In the original plan, the grouping of lots sometimes exceeded five. On these plans, there are no lots that are touching each other without an open space division more than five. The next comment was regarding the water superintense referral asking for information regarding fire flow. There has been a fire flow analysis that was submitted. It was also submitted to the fire department, and it indicates that adequate fire flow will be present at the site. There was a referral received today from the water department commenting that there's a 10-inch water line that has been designed for this subdivision, and that their standard is either 8 or 12. So their request would be that we would go to a 12-inch line rather than a 10-inch line. One of the questions that, or one of the comments that was received was that there was concern about the separation between the homes, particularly on this side, and the golf course. You might remember that it was much closer previously than it is now. This is the tennis pavilion. By raising that building and not constructing another structure at that location, this first golf hole has been relocated. So instead of running this way, kind of along, parallel to the back of the house lots, this area of the golf course has been moved about 100 to 110 feet further away from the houses and will be a dogleg that plays a dogleg right. In addition to that, these lots, the back of these lots right here, has been moved closer to Thelmathwoods Road by about 30 feet. So it's a substantial difference between, in terms of separation. There's also been a change in the design of the bunkering at this location, all that will encourage people to tee off from this location and hit their golf balls to the left rather than hitting their golf balls to the right. And Mr. Curry's face tells us that maybe that's not how he hits his golf balls. The final comment was regarding the open space. And I think Eliza has covered that. We had a couple of comments in the staff report and in the engineering report, and so there are just a couple of other changes. One is the turning radius, a question about whether the turning radius at the curve cut conforms to the regulations, and it does, and the plans will be updated to make that note specific. There was a question regarding whether or not we met the 150-foot minimum radius at this location, and so that's what that change is about. And there was a question on whether or not we meet the reverse tangent. It was in this area, and it does meet that, and the plans will be, will reflect that as well. Finally, there was a question about the drainage. The drainage analysis that was submitted to you met the requirements of Mass DEP under the stormwater standards, and it also met the requirements of the Cape Cod Commission. It did not meet the town's requirements, which are slightly different and are less stringent. So the stormwater report has been modified so that it will reflect the town's requirements and will include the soil's data, which were not included in the last submitted. And it's my proposal to give all of that to you tomorrow because I didn't think that it was useful to bring it all here tonight. There was no way anyone was going to be able to look at it. But that's about everything that I have. I think what we needed to convey to you, and I'm happy to answer any questions along with Eliza and Raul.
Yes, Paul?
Did you say that the cul-de-sac will meet the minimum grades?
Yes.
The cul-de-sac? Okay, I just didn't hear. Thank you.
Tom, you have any questions?
I have a couple of questions, yes. The 34-foot-wide roadway, would you have room to do a 44-foot-wide roadway?
We don't have enough room to do that without pushing. These lots, the minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet, and some of those lots are very close to 10,000 square feet. So to add the additional 10 feet into the layout, we would have to push the lots back. And from the perspective of, you know, the size and scale of the development, the goal was to keep it just a little bit more intimate in that area.
Thank you. Are there streetlights being proposed?
There are. There are five streetlights that are being proposed. Valleymead has some pretty distinctive poles with lights that are, they're at the Cape Club now, and they're all along Thelmathwoods Road. We've chosen a 10-foot pole that is similar to that with a full cutoff and an LED light, and five poles that are proposed that would go in here.
When the original Valleymead was approved, the housing development and the golf course, there was a lot of discussion about using parts of the golf course as open space for approval of the original development. Have you had to address any of that, has there been any consideration? I don't know if you're using, for this planned residential development, open space that's already been committed.
We are not.
You've done the title and the deed work to?
Yes.
Could you explain a little bit more about how the open space onsite is configured?
Sure. So the requirement mathematically is 8.57 acres. The request was, I think from this board, that we, to the extent possible, have that open space be contiguous with the residential development. So we decided that it didn't make a lot of sense to put this maintenance facility, which is existing, in that open space, just simply because of the way it's used. So it's active recreation, which is what's allowed under the PRD. And it's 8.57 acres that run through this kind of green striped area. So it's a portion of the driving range. It's some wooded area that exists between the driving range and this golf hole. So it was a mathematically designed area, and we tried to make it one contiguous package, if you would.
And so could you tell me, why is it essential to show eight acres onsite rather than the entire 21 or whatever it is, off-site?
The regulations provide that opportunity to use the onsite open space as where active recreation exists. And that was the idea, to do that rather than purchasing, in all honesty, 21 acres of, 25 acres of open space instead of 17.14 acres of open space.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, you have a question?
Active, please. What's the access from the first hole to the second hole? Is that through the development itself?
The access is across the, it's a little hard to see here, but there is a cart path that goes through here. And so, yes, there would be, there's an open space area here. The cart path would go through there. It would cross at the front of that cul-de-sac and then continue to the second hole. So in the first portion of the application, there was some information provided about Massachusetts general law and the allowance for crossings of, on a street where you're crossing from one hole to another of the same golf course. So we would propose that there be a crosswalk there and some signage at this location. So, yes, that's the crossing that we're proposing to get from the first hole to the second hole.
Was consideration given to going around the last couple of houses on the east side?
Topographically, it's a little bit of a challenge, and that's why it goes through.
Okay, the other question is, you're proposing 70 acres off-site, but it hasn't been identified. Is that correct?
Yes. We, we're looking for feedback from the planning board. We have a specific parcel in mind, but until, want to help me with this here? Until we, until the 300 committee submitted a letter today, for the record, and has asked that, before they continue negotiations, that they get some feedback from the planning board as to whether or not the concept of open space, off-site open space, is appropriate.
So that's a negotiation between you and the 300 committee?
It is, and they were looking for feedback.
Thank you.
I have a couple of concerns. Like Paul, I wondered if the cart path could be rerouted so that it does not go through the PRD. But I also have another concern, which is sort of two together. The area that's indicated is staff parking. I don't see any way to get there by vehicle. You've got a walking path.
Is this area in the back?
Yeah.
There's a, there's a way to get there now. There's a, there's a path that runs, I mean, a drivable path that runs right now. It goes this way. Once the, once the tennis pavilion is gone, it'll just continue to go that way, and will connect in with the existing path that's there.
So the cart path is what you're saying, that the golfers use?
It's more of a roadway to get to the maintenance facility.
Okay, well, it's not labeled as such, and it's certainly not intuitive to me that that's the way that would be accessed, nor is there any width on there. It looks like a very narrow path, like the cart path. The other concern that I have there is if you've got staff parking there. I'm not a golfer, but I do know that there are errant golf balls. And I would think that that may be a rather dangerous place to have staff walking the cars.
So at the end of the driving range at this location, we're probably fine from a distance perspective. At this point in time, this area is fully wooded, and there's no proposal to change that. So there, there is, the golf course is not open at this point in time, but this hole has existed for a long time, and there hasn't been a problem at this area. Should there be a problem, obviously, they would put a net up or address it in some way. But right now, this whole area is fully wooded. This area is currently open and used for parking, and this is the end of the driving range.
So, could I ask?
Yes.
So on a definitive plan, will you show the roadway to the parking?
Yes. Yeah, there's no reason why we can't.
Okay.
Yes, I have another question. Also shows on the plan, Pro Shop. Is that, that's going to be new, new building? If I read it correctly? To the right of the driving range? Is that what that building is there?
Here?
Nope, right below it.
There's office shop?
Office shop.
Oh, no, that office shop exists. That's there, that's the maintenance facility.
So it's not going to be a pro shop?
That's not going to be the pro shop, and there's not going to be any change to that building.
Okay, so the pro shop will remain in the clubhouse?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the office shop and the parking lot are not in your open space?
They are not.
Everybody, any, any, any questions from the public? Yes, come up and identify yourself, please.
My name's Brian McLaughlin. I'm a bowler.
Please step up here, yeah, so we can hear you at home.
Sure.
Okay? We can hear you, but they can't hear you at home until you stand up there.
I'm a principal of the golf, my name's Brian McLaughlin. I'm a principal of the golf course across the street. And I just, I noticed how they're doing one section. My concern is later on, when they do the second section, how much parking do they have? They have how many, 200 people for a wedding?
That is not in front of us right now.
That's not in front of you, okay, I understand.
So it's really out of order to talk about that. There'll be a time and a board that you'll get to discuss that, but not here.
Okay, fine. Then the other thing is, the range is just open, so to your point, yeah, they don't really know yet as to how many cars are going to get hit because it was only open a week, yesterday, I guess, is first day to open. The range used to be there.
I did take an opportunity to measure it. It's 300-plus yards, so it's a long shot.
So we're just at that section, not at the other section.
New to us, yeah.
Chairman, should we discuss the land acquisition idea? If this is the right time?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. We have a letter in the file. I mean, it's preliminary. On their plan, it doesn't really identify anything yet. And they say 17 acres to be acquired. So it could be, it could change.
Right. But I'd just like to voice my favor of the idea because I think that's what they're looking for.
Absolutely, go ahead.
And I was hoping that they would come with an off-site proposal because I didn't see the open space working on this site, really. And I'd be, yes, I'd be willing to agree that maybe the eight acres is feasible, but overall, I'm in favor of the idea for the off-site open space.
Pat?
I very much am in favor of that off-site open space, too, because when we were looking at it originally, even when it was all chopped up, as so-called open space, there was not going to really be access to the public. If we have 17 acres given to the 300 committee or the town, however it's done, those 17 acres would be, as is the tradition with the 300 committee, accessible to people.
John?
Is there precedence for this?
Yes. There's a couple, yeah, yeah.
Yes, the board has allowed it in the past. Rolling Hills subdivision is the best example. I can give you this 20 acres just to the west of the high school and south of the Rolling Acres subdivision that would utilize off-site as open space.
Thank you.
And you missed it, John. The last time, they were trying to put everything here in the golf course, and we just didn't quite buy that that was all open space, open to everybody. And this, this is more to the letter of our bylaw. And this, this is more to the letter of our bylaw, trying to accommodate it.
Okay, thanks.
It's kind of what we asked them to do.
I, I'm in favor of the offsite accommodation to the open space as well. And given that a golf course, it could be completely developed. And the idea that this isn't open space, it is sort of open space if you look at it that way, but, so I, I'm pleased with the clustered development here as opposed to a grid. I understand why they want to utilize some open space here to minimize some of the purchase that they would have to do offsite. So I would be in favor of that. I think they've tried to accommodate our wishes.
Anybody else? John?
I'd just like to comment, they've asked about using the drive-through for the golf carts between the first hole and the second hole. That's pretty common in a lot of places for golf communities. And the way she described it, they're really only going to be on a very small portion of the roadway, maybe thirty feet or so it looks like. And there's four homes at that end of that cul-de-sac, so it's not going to be a high-traffic area. So when it comes to it, I would not be opposed to it. It's pretty common.
When you consider some of the other golf courses where you have to cross the road.
Paul was waiting.
Doug, go first, I'll go back. I go left and right, go ahead, you go.
All right. I just wanted to say, on a positive note, that I think, you know, doing the denatification system and including the clubhouse is a big improvement, so I'm happy with that.
Paul?
These are hard times for golf courses and I see what they're trying to do here to make this thing a more viable project and it's probably good for the community. I'm a little uncomfortable with the offsite area. I think that's fine, but I think we have to identify what we're talking about, where the offsite's going to be and how that's going to happen.
Okay, this is preliminary, they'll be back again. Anybody else in the audience?
John is.
John, one more.
Jim, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
What is the size of the golf course in acreage, please?
The entire parcel is a hundred and twenty-nine point eight acres.
So it's almost a hundred and thirty acres of, of land that's going to have twenty-eight homes sitting on it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, come forward.
Hi, my name is Tim Riddon and I am the past president of the Valley Meed Property Owners Association. Our current president happens to be out of town. I'd just like to say that we have been fully engaged in this process with the developer and the developer's representative since December of two thousand and fourteen. He's kept us actively engaged in the process to include quarterly meetings with the residents, the multiple changes that have been made to the plan over time. We have been supportive of the project in the past and we continue to be supportive of the project going forward. Thank you.
Okay, across that, we'll be looking forward to the definitive plan.
We'll just draft you up something to, to look at in a week or so. If you do have a little extra time, the applicant has agreed to the extension to the thirteenth with a letter in the files without effect. Because as we all know, over the Fourth of July holidays, it's tough to get a quorum sometimes. And it's allowing you to digest some material and give us some time to wrap things up tightly. So you'll probably see this a little bit on the, well, I will schedule it so you have a full discussion, you have enough time to digest it and discuss.
Do we need to vote an extension?
No, this is a preliminary plan. This is a definitive plan, you'd have to vote the extension and file it to town clerk, but technically, there's no way to actually extend a preliminary plan, but we go through this a little nicety, just, please.
It's a friendly.
Nice and friendly.
Miss Pat?
With the request from the three hundred committee, should we make this any more official or just that six of us here say, yeah, it's a pretty good idea?
I think there's probably enough guidance here. And in your decision, which is your formal vote, you'll have ample guidance for the applicant and any third party.
Jim, can I ask one more question?
Sure, John.
I was not here when the original proposal came up from the board. I saw the plan tonight that showed the twenty-eight homes could be built using up most of the golf course. If this gets approved, does that preclude that other land from ever being used for housing development, what they showed on the original plan? Or could somebody at a future date come back with another plan?
Lot two is dedicated to this project. The, the plan, if you open up to lot two, they show how the subdivision would work, where the lots are fit. And that's spoken for now. See this? See, John? Keep going, one more. There it is.
Things that went previous.
One more. Sheet three. And it was, they didn't have it on the screen, it's, it's, it's referred to as lot two, and that's now committed to the open space for these lots.
Okay, that's right.
We'll find out.
We'll discuss that, we'll make sure we wrap that up a little tightly.
Talk with the applicant.
I'm just curious, because there could be another owner at some future date and they would want to do more housing and would this preclude that land from being used for future housing development?
That's a very good question and we will have that answered before you fire into your decision.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, don't forget, moving on. Thank you very much. Thanks for addressing all our issues.
Tim, how are you?
Excuse me, we're still in order here. Sorry, guys, we're in the middle of a meeting. We have certain rules we have to follow, I'm sorry. We're next on is committee reports and assignments. Yeah.
Make sure that'll list in your package.
Yeah, the package, okay.
Committees, local plans subcommittee, Pat, Bob, Jim. CPC, Paul. Coastal Ponds Management, Doug. Water Quality Management, Paul. Joint Conservation Planning Board Subcommittee, that's the new one that we voted on the other night. So we need some volunteers. So, there we have it.
Well, since I'm the only one with two assignments to date, I'm not volunteering for a third.
I think, don't you think we need to say whether everybody wants to stay on those committees?
Yeah, let's first go through the other ones, sir.
I certainly would love to stay on the local comprehensive plan committee.
Yeah, same here, even if I get voted off, I'd go as the public.
Right.
Well, I'll agree for one more year. I can tell you, it is a lot of work. Every Wednesday, it's a challenging commitment of time, but it's also one of the most rewarding positions that we have.
I think it's important that we finalize it.
Yeah, we're, we're right at the end right now, and that's why I just.
Right at the end, and then we're thinking that it's probably going to morph into a permanent committee where we'll be the watchdog of the local comprehensive plan, so.
Like the watchman of the warrant.
Yes. So, so at that point, I think would be a good time to change.
For discussion, we haven't, we're not bringing it forward, but that's the idea we've discussed in that board when we totally finish, that the board would start again reviewing what the action items were for all the elements and going through and see how, how we're doing. Just like when we started the process, we invited all the stakeholders to come in and, you know, like the DPW or Conservation, and we had to come in and talk to them. And then we're going to invite them back in and say, okay, these are the action items we had and how you doing on them? You know, just, just talk to them about it and see if there's any refreshing. Because the goals and policies don't go back to town meeting, so they, they really just, you know, they're, they're, they're pretty much set for a long time. But the action items are something that this board brings forward and then goes to the selectmen and bring forward, you know, as they finish and we take them off when they're done. So it's kind of like a joint strategic plan with the selectmen, you know, on these items that we put them out there. But they, they come and go as they get finished. So our goal is to, within a few months, start reviewing where we started and going to the selectmen with a report at town meeting, say how we're doing on the goals, on the action items we had in place. Is that pretty much what we said? And I have something to get ready for a meeting tomorrow. I wanted to, we have to, we're starting on the reviewing that process, so.
So you guys will stay on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sold.
CPC, Paul, you ready for another year?
I'd be pleased to stay on the Committee Preservation Committee.
Okay. Coastal Ponds Management, Doug?
Yeah, I'm willing to continue on and hopefully we get regrouped this year and back in action.
Water Quality Management, Paul?
I'll be pleased to continue with that group.
Great. So, John, looks like we're going to have to get you involved in one of these things here.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
How about the next person that's going to join this board? Are we doing this this evening or is this just we discussing this?
Well, we can discuss it and leave it open, we're not going to.
Because we have one, one more person that's going to be joining here in a few weeks, I would presume. And it may be someone that has a lot of expertise in one of these areas.
So do you want to hold off?
I'm only asking, I'm the new guy, so.
You still have to volunteer.
I don't like volunteering, I'm just saying that.
Brian, when are we scheduled for that, for our new, next week? Next week.
So again, a, a person who is appointed to the board, say, next week, is certainly free to join one of these committees. But if you want to hold off on any votes, let's, let's find them.
You can have, as long as we don't have a quorum.
Yeah, we just can't put four on.
Can't put four.
So any, any of these committees, you can have another person?
Yes, you can have three.
Other than the first, where you have three.
Yeah.
You can have up to three.
Up to three, no more than three, because then it becomes a planning board meeting. Because it has a quorum of the board. So are you suggesting we table this for tonight and bring it up later?
Well, if we make all the decisions tonight, could the?
I think it's a really good point. I, I don't mind, I think it's an excellent point, actually. We'll see who we got to talk about again, okay? Doug, do something sense to you?
It makes sense to me. I was just feeling a little urgency about having our subcommittee for the Joint Conservation Planning Board Subcommittee, but I guess I'd be willing to wait if others think it's important.
When are we thinking of beginning that? Did, did they vote this week?
No, they can't until the first week in July, they said.
Oh, okay.
When we met with them. But that's coming up real quick.
Yeah.
And maybe we should just express interest tonight. And I would be interested in that joint committee.
I will also be interested.
I would be too, but I won't.
Paul?
The local plans subcommittee, they have the same people that developed all the work, they've done a great job. They're most knowledgeable on the issues with the conservation, but I don't think the identical people should be on both committees.
Right, I agree.
I think there's a history of experience there, you guys worked really, really hard on, they come up with some very good ideas, so some of that shouldn't be lost and some of those people, one or two of those should be on this new committee, but perhaps someone else could be on there. Doug might be a good choice, he's not in the first group, but I think that's a good idea.
Well, that may be a good place for John or whoever the new member is going to be to, depending upon interest.
Which committee is that, please?
The Joint Conservation Planning Board Subcommittee. We're limited to three by our vote.
But I hate to lose the inertia, it's been developed on the local planning subcommittee that's been developed over the last year, maybe two now. I mean, there's a lot of work on it and there's a lot of knowledge there that you guys ought to use for this next committee as well.
Well, keep, keep in mind, too, I, I think when we, we talk about that, we want to have the whole committee involved in kind of like one of the, working on the mission statement, okay? And with the direction of it. So we're all going to have, that, we all, I think that's what we need to think about for our next meeting and exactly, you know, we don't want to just create this committee, just create a second committee, we want to give them specific direction and assignments and things to work on. And I think the, the conservation was concerned about that as well. So I think that we probably should think about what the important things we want on and have both, have this committee take it to both boards, have the conservation weigh in and make sure we're all going in the exact same direction.
Well, hopefully, when we meet again, we will have a full board.
Yep. So everyone think about it, okay? Because it is important.
Okay. Can I say, how many candidates being interviewed for the position on the planning board?
Is it four?
I didn't know how many.
And we're meeting next?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eighth, six-thirty.
Unfortunately, I'd be, I'll be traveling, but we might be able to attend that meeting, which I'm disappointed in.
Going to do an absentee vote?
Can't do it.
Phone it in.
Okay, future, well, general correspondence, where's that purple folder? Nope, don't see it tonight, but we've, nothing general? Why, we don't see it. We had all specific correspondence, nothing general.
You've got some specific correspondence that pertains to some of the applicants for next week, but we'll make sure you get that in your paper.
Yep. Future agenda items.
Should we have a discussion about the mission statement for that new Conservation Planning Board?
Yeah, I think we should, when we have a full board, yeah. So let's put that on the agenda.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. Good point. Thank you.
The meeting on the twenty-eighth, the sole reason for that is to interview and appoint, correct? Okay.
Nothing else is on the agenda, just in and out. Now, is that a selectmen's meeting?
Are you interested in this?
And we're just going to be one item?
I don't know what it is.
It's a, it's a joint meeting, so you're.
So there's, they don't have any other agenda items either? It's just one thing, in and out? Because sometimes it could get lost if we're not.
No, no, it's just, it's just a meeting to, to interview and so choose a point.
Jim, this is a Tuesday night. Their, their regular meeting is on the Monday, so.
It gets out before docs in.
Any other future agenda items? Yes?
Just a, a question. I've been reading in the paper and this board has been discussing the idea of affordable housing in our community. And part of the discussion is to possibly rezone some areas, to have mixed use, which would create more housing, those types of ideas. I would like to have some definition of what people think is affordable housing. Is it homeownership? Is it rentals?
It's everything. It's, my understanding is that by definition, it's eighty percent of the, the income qualification for the county of Arsenal.
I know, I understand what the formula is, but someone created a housing plan that we're short of a certain amount of housing. I wasn't here when that was discussed, but I would like to know what, what that, that study said the town should create. More rentals, more homeownership, but at the affordable rate? And, and to do that, how?
It wasn't specific on the ownership of it, whether it be rented or not, but there's three areas that, that we, there was a lot of things it did, but there was three areas that they targeted or said that could be done, that referred to as low-hanging fruit. Basically, the easiest ones, and there's the accessory apartment bylaw, the multifamily district, and the conversion bylaw. And we are going after those three right away, first being the accessory apartment, then probably multifamily, and then the conversion. We're just going at them one, one, two, three. There's a lot more that can be done, but those are the only ones that. There's a lot more that can be done, but those are the only ones that we've talked about as the board of actually doing something on, and we're working on. So, uh, have you, have you been through the housing study? Have you had a chance to?
I have not.
Paul? We'll make sure you get a copy of it.
Okay.
It's pretty big.
If my memory is correct, Jim, Judy said that we, there are two things here, that we are short on affordable rentals. And the definition of affordable, the 80%, is too high for people to afford of the kind that we're trying to capture, that they can actually live here on the Cape. I'm not sure. I think that was like $1,200 a month at that time. It may even be higher now. I don't know. It may be a little lower.
But by ourselves, we're not gonna change that definition.
No, we're not gonna change that definition, but she left it open that we need more rentals. And we have started to talk about microhousing. That's part of what you're seeing there, sort of on the corner. Thank you.
Future agenda item you may want to have is just a little refresher on the demand study, identification of new members, and, and what, what is our status?
Yeah, that's a really good idea. It's, it's been more than a year. It's time to bring it up.
Throw that in with the joint meeting with selectmen. There's plenty of extra time.
Talk about future agenda.
Yes.
Okay, so a refresher.
We'll have a full board by then.
Yeah.
Right. In fact, that'd be very, that might be a really good idea, because you have two, two new members.
Any more future gen items?
Get that out further quickly.
Next meeting, June 28th, 2016, is a joint meeting with the board of selectmen. And Paul, you made a note that you will not be able to.
Yeah, I'm only traveling, I'll be out of state.
Okay.
If you vote, if the board could just let Alenda know your possibility for the July 5th meeting, my sense is.
Tomorrow what?
July 5th.
July the 5th, and that's why we have the extension on Valley Me to the, uh, to the 12th. Paul, we'll talk about it.
I move adjournance if we're ready.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.